... Call this meeting over with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, to the republic of which we stand, one nation, united in its whole, with liberty and justice for all. Go, go.
Slattery.
Here.
Slattery here. Coolos.
Here.
Coolos here. Johnson.
Here.
Johnson here. Frosto. Frosto absent. Lado. Lado absent. Vieda. Vieda absent. Rita. Rita absent. Donahue.
Here.
Donahue here. Holly.
Here.
Holly here. Fairwood.
Here.
Fairwood here. Osling.
Here.
Osling here. Thompson.
Here.
Thompson here. Carr.
Here.
Carr here. Pittman.
Here.
Pittman here. Tim.
Thank you very much. We have moved to the presentation of general proceedings. I need a motion to approve the city council minutes for the date of November the 27th, 2018. Do I have a motion? Motion. All of you. Pittman. Second. Let's see, uh, over to Donahue.
Sure, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Thank you. We now move up to public comment again. We'll try to limit you to three minutes. Fairness to everyone. Whoever would like to speak regarding anything that's on the agenda, please make your way to the podium.
My name is Robert McClellan, and I'm here in reference to my water bill received for the month of October. History averages usage for one year is four to five gallons of water. In October, I received a bill stating I had to use forty-eight thousand gallons of water, which is totally ridiculous. I have called for investigation. They have came out to my location twice to state that my reading for the 7th of December was five thousand. That's the reading after the forty-eight thousand. Before the forty-eight thousand, it was four thousand. It's unbelievable, and I think there should be a investigation going on to see why this is taking place, up and down, up and down, up and down. But forty-eight thousand, it's ridiculous.
What we can do is we'll have them send out again, uh, both the supervisors and the water department to go back to your home with your permission to see where we are and then speak with, uh, the people in charge of the water department, see where the problem is. So, I'll get your number, name and address, and then we'll try to address that as soon as possible, maybe as early as tomorrow. Can't promise tomorrow, but hopefully before the end of the week.
Please do.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Murphy, 130, 42, South Western.
Yes, sir.
I'm here this evening, first off, happy holidays, and I'm here for the city of Blue Island. As of yesterday, I am seeking reelection to Moraine Valley as a trustee representing Blue Island and twenty-five other cities and villages. I've had the privilege of serving Blue Island since 1989, elected twice to Community High School District 218's Board, once to the Blue Island Park District, and since 2000 for the last eighteen years at Moraine Valley. I'm here asking all of you, no matter what aisle, side of the aisle you're on, I'm a Blue Islander first. Moraine Valley is an extremely valuable asset to all the communities. We have brought a ranch campus to Blue Island, Tinley Park, and with your support, I'd like to do it for another six years. Thank you. When I started this, I think I had dark hair like Mr. Donahue. So, thank you.
And you want else?
Rachel Olaska, 1-19-57, South Longwood. I'm also one of the co-captain of Neighborhood 8237. For December, we're now collecting our goodie bags for the seniors in our area, and I suggest to all of you, if you know you've got neighbors that's homebound, you can't get out or have problems getting out, take them a little package over there for Christmas. Just one of the things that I wanted you to make aware of, I also want to say Merry Christmas to Blue Island, you know, not just the city council, the whole city. We had a terrible year this year, coming to city council, the different things that happened. How much we got accomplished, I really don't know. Some of it was good, a lot of it, probably as I'm concerned, was bad. I think one of the biggest problems we have, you have a lot of compassion for certain people and then other people, you kind of like stomp them into the dirt. And I feel if you're in Blue Island, everyone should receive some kind of compassion, some kind of neighborly, uh, you know, benefit of the doubt of, you know, just being nice to people, and we just don't have that here, and that's too bad. But I see that Maple Tree Inn has a lot of friends in the city council, and parade for them. There was other people that came into Blue Island, and they come here with all good intentions, and nobody have any compassion, not even a business ethic towards them of goodwill. It's like they get punished for coming here, you know? I love this city, you know, but with a good heart, I can't tell people to bring a business here because I know they're gonna be messed over, and that's not right. Hopefully, next year, we'll have a better year, maybe some changes will come in, maybe they'll be good, maybe they won't, you know? But I do wish everyone a Happy New Year, maybe we'll have a better year.
Thank you very much. And when I say, now I move, uh, I need the firm first. Chief.
John LaPorte.
Bob. Let's stand next to him. We're gonna be swearing in a new firefighter, so I'm gonna need you to repeat after me, and please raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Joseph LaPorte.
Having been appointed?
Having been appointed.
To the office of firefighter?
The office of firefighter.
For the city of Blue Island?
The city of Blue Island.
County of Cook?
County of Cook.
State of Illinois?
State of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties?
The duties.
Of the office?
Of the office.
For the fire department?
Fire department.
In the city of Blue Island?
The city of Blue Island.
County of Cook?
County of Cook.
State of Illinois?
State of Illinois.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. There you go. Thank you. Does anybody try to write?
Yes.
Now we need the four new full-time police officers, who are you on?
Full-time.
Two full-time, the two full-time police officers, please. And then let me take this, and, um... I'll be one. I got some swearing needs. Alright, you're gonna repeat after me, we're gonna take one at a time, and we're gonna start with the officer, okay? I state your name.
I give on a...
Having been appointed?
Having been appointed.
To the office of police officer?
To the office of police officer.
In the city of Blue Island?
In the city of Blue Island.
County of Cook?
County of Cook.
State of Illinois?
State of Illinois.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
So help me God. So help me God. Congratulations. I need you to raise your right hand. State your name.
I.
I, Eric Frer.
Having been appointed?
Having been appointed.
To the office?
To the office.
Of police officer?
Of police officer.
In the city of Blue Island?
In the city of Blue Island.
County of Cook?
County of Cook.
State of Illinois?
State of Illinois.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
So help me God. So help me God. Congratulations. Okay, what we have, both or individually, what was your... You can ask. Thank you. We have to cut this shot.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna say it. I'm gonna say it. Alright. Are we good? Can we do it?
Sure.
Alright. Here you go. One, two, three. Yeah? Thank you very much. Congratulations, guys. Now we need the new, the two candidates for part-time police officers in City of Blue Island. And we'll do ladies first. Need you to raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Sherida Loring.
Having been appointed?
Have been appointed.
To the office?
To the office.
As a part-time police officer?
As a part-time police officer.
In the city of Blue Island?
In the city of Blue Island.
County of Cook?
County of Cook.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America?
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties?
The duties.
Of the office?
Of the office.
Of the police department?
Of the police department.
In the city of Blue Island?
The city of Blue Island.
County of Cook?
County of Cook.
State of Illinois?
State of Illinois.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. I need you to raise your right hand. State your name.
I.
I, Eric Frer.
Having been appointed?
Having been appointed.
To the office?
To the office.
Of police officer?
Of police officer.
In the city of Blue Island?
In the city of Blue Island.
County of Cook?
County of Cook.
State of Illinois?
State of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America?
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties?
The duties.
Of the office?
Of the office.
Of the police department?
Of the police department.
In the city of Blue Island?
In the city of Blue Island.
County of Cook?
County of Cook.
State of Illinois?
State of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America?
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties?
The duties.
Of the office?
Of the office.
As a full-time police officer?
As a full-time police officer.
For the city of Blue Island?
For the city of Blue Island.
County of Cook?
County of Cook.
State of Illinois?
State of Illinois.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Okay, what we have, both or individually, what was your...
Thank you.
We have to cut this shot.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna say it. I'm gonna say it. Alright. Are we good? Can we do it?
Sure.
Alright. Here you go. One, two, three. Yeah? Thank you very much. Congratulations, guys. Now we need the new, the two candidates for part-time police officers in City of Blue Island. And we'll do ladies first. Need you to raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Sherida Loring.
Having been appointed?
Have been appointed.
To the office?
To the office.
As a part-time police officer?
As a part-time police officer.
In the city of Blue Island?
In the city of Blue Island.
County of Cook?
County of Cook.
State of Illinois?
State of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America?
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties?
The duties.
Of the office?
Of the office.
Of the police department?
Of the police department.
In the city of Blue Island?
In the city of Blue Island.
County of Cook?
County of Cook.
State of Illinois?
State of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America?
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of?
The duties of.
A part-time police officer?
A part-time police officer.
For the city of Blue Island?
For the city of Blue Island.
County of Cook?
County of Cook.
State of Illinois?
State of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America?
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of?
The duties of.
A part-time police officer?
A part-time police officer.
For the city of Blue Island?
For the city of Blue Island.
County of Cook?
County of Cook.
State of Illinois?
State of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America?
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of?
The duties of.
A part-time officer?
A part-time officer.
In the city of Blue Island?
In the city of Blue Island.
County of Cook?
County of Cook.
State of Illinois?
State of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America?
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of?
The duties of.
A part-time officer?
A part-time officer.
In the city of Blue Island?
In the city of Blue Island.
County of Cook?
County of Cook.
State of Illinois?
State of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America?
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of?
The duties of.
A part-time officer?
A part-time officer.
In the city of Blue Island?
For the city of Blue Island.
County of Cook?
County of Cook.
State of Illinois?
State of Illinois.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Do you have a standing room to come up? Credit. Credit. I'm the senator. Credit. Alright, very good. And we'll let the young lady behind you also take a picture.
I'm sending it to her.
Okay? Congratulations.
I'm gonna call a little bit off schedule just to get this out. Regarding the mayor's analysis, we do have right around the clock, December 31st, at 11:30 PM, in the corner of Vermont and Western, in the parking lot that's at the country moment. Everybody knows where that parking lot is. We will have a DJ that, well, the weather won't be as bad as it was last year, but it's like, we were below zero last time we were out there, with a DJ, and the wire won't say lasted around 25 minutes. So that's that, and the ball dropped just like we did. Uh, the next thing, Mr. Robinson Engineering, Eric, are you ready?
Yep. Right. Okay. Go ahead. I want to say something before she leaves. I believe also Ms. Rita Horton is the first African-American female police officer on the Blue Island Police Department. Woo! Okay, mayor, she lives in Blue Island.
And Blue Island, brother.
Alright, then.
And the court tour five. Wildcat. Give me a little touch. Wildcat, wildcat.
Alright, congratulations again.
Thank you.
Another first.
Thank you.
Mr. Albert. This is the one even survey results presentation.
It would, mine also, that would be great.
One should look more lower, sound appropriate. It's one of the over the screen, if you know which one they are.
Give me a second to wake this thing up.
I got the same problem. Not all of them, not all of them.
It's like the movies.
That's okay. You didn't have to shut the back ones up, just...
Alright. Just make sure this is working, and, uh, my guest, also importantly, can everybody hear me without the microphone?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, tend to be kind of loud, so this, this works for me. Alright, so my name's Eric Alvarez with Robinson Engineering, and I'm here to present to you the 2018 Blue Island pavement condition survey, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council and city staff, for the opportunity to carry out this survey and also to be here tonight. Alright, so a little bit of an introduction. Um, so who are we? So, again, I'm Eric Alvarez with Robinson Engineering, where the city engineers for the city of Blue Island have been so since 1965, so if you do a little math there, that's over fifty years of history of service for the city of Blue Island, a relationship we're very proud of at Robinson Engineering, and something we hope to continue. So, we work closely with the city of Blue Island Public Works Department, Finance Department, and Building Department to maintain and improve the city's public infrastructure, so that's things like our water and wastewater systems, our city streets and sidewalks, our bridges, our waterways, our street lighting and traffic signals, and we do plan reviews for new developments. So, again, we're engineers, and what we do well is infrastructure, and what we don't do well is make presentations, so, uh, gonna apologize in advance for the public speaking and also let you know this is a fairly short presentation, five to ten minutes if it goes okay. So, I got a joke for y'all. What's the difference between an introverted and an extroverted engineer? An introverted engineer looks at their own shoes while they're talking to you, and an extroverted engineer looks at your shoes while they're talking to you. Alright, so, yeah, that's it, that's the, that's the end of my batch. Okay, so, what are we doing here? So, in September and October of 2018, Blue Island commissioned us to do a survey and catalog the condition of every city-maintained street in the city of Blue Island. This is a tool that's going to help us plan for future roadway repairs. It covers citywide, the city street network in Blue Island, which is over forty-five miles of locally owned and maintained city streets. What it does not cover is streets owned by other agencies, for instance, the Illinois Department of Transportation, or the Cook County Department of Highway and Transportation. So, again, this is the city streets only. Okay, so, we have the results, which I'm going to read through for you. So, what we do is we basically divide the city streets into segments, and we rate each segment from excellent to poor, and everywhere in between. I'll go through, I'll put little pictures here on the right-hand side, so hopefully everybody can kind of see them, of the different conditions and kind of get an idea of what we're talking about here, but I'm gonna describe it for you too, as well. So, streets that are in excellent condition, these are recently repaved streets that will last for ten to fifteen years of, without any major maintenance, and basically need no work at this time. And this is a picture right here of 123rd Place in front of the school, which was reconstructed in 2016 using a combination of Cook County Development Block Grant Funds and the city's corporate funds, and it's an example of city, uh, street in excellent condition, which is twelve percent of the total. Moving down the line to good, so these are streets that require minimal repairs and preventative maintenance, for example, there are good benefits for crack sealing, and would be need to resurface in the next five to ten years depending on maintenance and weather and loading. Moving down the list, and good streets account for twenty-eight percent of the city's total. Next up is streets in fair condition, so this is pavements that are structurally sound but are in need of resurfacing at this time. Upon resurfacing, the expected pavement life is ten to fifteen years before resurfacing is needed again. And before we move on to the bottom two, I just want to point out to everybody, so this, this area right here, this is where the city gets the most bang for its buck in resurfacing. Once the streets deteriorate down into this territory, it becomes very expensive to ma, to repair them, so, from an economic point of view, from an engineering economics point of view, it makes sense for us to stay up here, okay? So, that was twenty-seven percent of the streets in fair condition. Moving down the list to inferior, so we have pavements that are experiencing severe distress, and I'll show you what I'm talking about here. We got some potholes, we've got some severe cracking, some settlement around this sewer and we rate each segment from excellent to poor, and everywhere in between. I'll go through, I'll put little pictures here on the right-hand side, so hopefully everybody can kind of see them, all the different conditions, and kind of get an idea of what we're talking about here, but I'm going to describe it for you too as well. So streets that are in excellent condition, these are recently repaved streets that will last for ten to fifteen years without any major maintenance, and basically need no work at this time. And this is a picture right here of one hundred twenty-third place in front of the school, which was reconstructed in two thousand and sixteen using a combination of Cook County Development Block Grant Funds and the city's corporate funds. And it's an example of city, uh, street in excellent condition, which is twelve percent of the total. Moving down the line to good, so these are streets that require minimal repairs and preventative maintenance. For example, there are good benefits for crack sealing, and would be need to resurface in the next five to ten years depending on maintenance and weather and loading. Uh, moving down the list, um, and good streets are counted for twenty-eight percent of the city's total. Next up is streets in fair condition. So this is pavements that are structurally sound, but are in need of resurfacing at this time. Upon resurfacing, the expected pavement life is ten, fifteen years before resurfacing is needed again. Um, and before we move on to the bottom two, I just want to point out to everybody, so this, this area right here, this is where the city gets the most bang for its buck in resurfacing. Once the streets deteriorate down into this territory, it becomes very expensive to ma- to repair them. So from an economic point of view, from an engineering economics point of view, it makes sense for us to stay up here. Okay, so that was twenty-seven percent of the streets in fair condition. Moving down the list to inferior, so we have pavements that are experiencing severe distress. I'll show you what I'm talking about here, we got some potholes. We've got some severe cracking, some settlement around this sewer structure that has been patched. And what this amounts to is a higher cost per foot for roadway repairs versus these other two conditions here. And that was nineteen percent of the total. Uh, last on the list is pavements in poor condition. Now, again, put another picture down here, you can see there's severe alligator cracking. Uh, this is due to failure of the base below the, below the actual roadway. There's potholes. There may be need for underground infrastructure repair. For instance, maybe the water main underneath there is broken, the sewers are settling. Or the roadway may be functionally obsolete, so there may be no parking where parking's needed. There may be drainage problems. But this is the most expensive of all, the road's in poor condition, they need, they need serious work. And that accounted to thirteen percent of the total. Okay, so what does this get us? This gets us map. So you can see graphically, this is an aerial view, of course, of the city of Blue Island, the whole city. There. And so, uh, again, this is graphically representing the condition of the various streets. We've got excellent in blue, good in green, fair in orange, inferior in yellow, and poor in pink. And this kind of shows you at a glance, you know, there's areas of the city that have been, that are in better condition. You know, for instance, California Gardens, and I don't know if, uh, residents of California Gardens, if there's anybody here you noticed, there was a big resurfacing and crack sealing project that we did in the subdivision this, um, summer. And that was, uh, again, probably, we were in the, that sweet spot where it makes economic sense to do repairs now because you get free bang for your buck. So you see, you know, this is, this, and it's also newer, so this is in fairly good condition. It also identifies areas of the city that are, we need to continue focusing on and that need more work. Okay, so we use these maps for cost estimates and planning, and for identifying funding opportunities. So the city aggressively pursues, um, funding for infrastructure maintenance, and we use a combination of local funds, so that's the city's corporate funds and federal funds, which can come from the Federal Highway Administration, the Illinois Department of Transportation, and the Motor Fuel Techs. We use TIP district funds, funds from Cook County Development Block Grant, uh, the RTA, which stands for the Regional Transport Authority, and the MWRD, which is Metropolitan Waste Reclamation District of Chicago. So I put up a couple of maps here just so you can get an idea of what I'm talking about. Um, on the left-hand side, these are, uh, streets eligible for Cook County Community Development Block Grant Funds. And on the right-hand side, these are streets eligible for TIP district funding, which is, if you don't know, taxpayer increment financing. And it just helps us identify, um, how, how to pay for these repairs. Okay, so moving forward, um, the city of Blue Island has been prioritizing street repairs since the completion of the Chatham Division Street Bridge Projects. So you probably noticed in the past two or three years of ramping up of roadwork, so pardon our dust, um, but the city does prioritize street repairs, and we've been working aggressively in the past two to three years since the completion of the bridges to get everything up to, up to speed, so what's next? This survey's good, but what we need to do next is develop a pavement management plan for the city, which involves preparing detailed cost estimates, identify a target maintenance goal, again, whether that's keeping streets in good condition, or fair condition, or somewhere in between, something that we can have make sense with the city's budget, identify additional funding sources, and prepare a schedule and plan for achieving that goal. All right. So again, my name's Eric Alredz with Robinson Engineering, we're the city engineers for the city of Blue Island. We attend each city council meeting and each municipal services committee meeting. At this time, I'd like to know if anybody has any questions.
Counselor?
Um, I got, I have a question.
Yes, Alderman.
Mr. Alredz, if, if there's a complaint, say for instance, a cracked sidewalk, or, or some unfinished curving or something, who do we contact? Or who do residents contact, per se?
Okay, so the, definitely the best first port of call is the City of Blue Island Public Works Director Department for, for the sort of things exactly what you mentioned. They have, uh, the city of Blue Island's fairly unique in, um, in the area in that they have a, a very proactive public works department that does, for instance, their own sidewalk and curb repairs. So they would definitely be the first port of call. Um, the public works director department may direct, um, you know, the resident or the city councilman to come to the municipal services committee, which is at the end of every month, if, you know, if wanted, it's a good place to talk about these things. But so I would recommend starting with the public works department, and then, um, you know, at their recommendation, or if wanted, you know, to come to the municipal services committee. Go ahead.
Could you further elaborate on, on maintenance?
Uh, go ahead, go and take it, but I had a question from the Alderman, Alderman.
Okay, sir, yes, sir.
Uh, could you further elaborate on, on maintenance, which, which you're referring to as, uh,
Sure.
being done as far as maintenance?
Okay, let me, let me go back just a couple here, and I won't get too nerdy here. You guys will stop me if I, if I get too carried away, but, okay, so maintenance, basically, um, will depend on the condition of the roadway. So for instance, up here, there's really nothing to do, you just give it, give it five years, let cracks develop, uh, see how the pavement ages and wears. And then once it gets down here, you crack seal, which is a process of reaming out the cracks in the pavement, filling them with a filler to prevent water from getting underneath it and further damaging it. And that's a method to prolong it until it gets here, where, um, you do a light resurfacing, maybe an inch or two, depending on, again, depending on the condition, and patching and fixing of the curb as needed. Once you get down here, um, it's case by case. You take, uh, you take pavement samples, you figure out the best and most economical method. Usually it's a fairly heavy resurfacing unless there's drainage problems, in which case you might have to completely reconstruct the road.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
I was, you said it only lasts ten to fifteen years?
That's the wearing surface.
You don't have anything else that can make it last longer? Because I was, someone, I had talked about this before, that you all have something that would make that last for twenty-five years.
Replay.
Yeah, so I was, why just ten to fifteen years?
That, that's, that's the, I mean, that's the typical life for a wearing surface, for an asphalt wearing surface for a roadway. It can last longer, especially, a- as we mentioned here, being proactive with maintenance, crack sealing, taking care of any drainage problems that developed. Yeah, well, definitely, you can prolong the wearing surface of roads to twenty to twenty-five years. But it just depends, it depends on loading, it depends on maintenance, and it depends on, you know, the drainage, a, a lot of things.
Does it depend on the material you use, too?
Oh, definitely, and the, the actual construction methods used. If the street was properly compacted, it's going to last a lot longer than if it wasn't. If it went down when it was too cold, there's, uh, there, there is a thousand things that will affect the life of that pavement.
Alderman, car.
Alderman. Eric, if you could go to the slide that, one more.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. There's many areas in the city that don't qualify for CDVG or for TIP district.
Yes, Alderman.
When do you think we can expect those areas to be paved?
So I think Alderman, that's, again, putting, putting these areas on the map kind of helps demonstrate that point that Alderman Carr had just, um, said, there, there, there are areas here that kind of fall into, uh, a zone outside of this Cook County Development Block Grant and outside of the city's TIP districts. And the answer to that is, we as the city engineers and as, um, you know, the city staff, need to develop a plan utilizing alternative funding sources. So that, that is being done, for instance, Maple Avenue largely falls out, outside of these. Uh, we, we had, uh, through the city staff, we applied for federal aid classification for the road, so that will allow it to be federally funded. And then also going forward, I mean, the city does have alternative fund sources for infrastructure repair through things like the RTA, through things like the MWRD, and through the Motor Fuel Techs. So we don't have a schedule yet, that's what I mentioned, Alderman, but the, the next step of this is definitely to develop a pavement management plan. We had a five-year plan, but we're coming to, near to the end of that, and we need to renew this.
Maybe two more questions, because we've got to continue with the city council, go ahead.
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a report showing what was done and when it was done? Because on my block, I notice all this trucks and drilling and things going on. Can I get a report from what was done and when it was done?
Probably through municipal services, we, they, they, they need.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that would, that would be great. So municipal services committee meets the last Tuesday of the month, fourth Tuesday of the month. And, you know, if, or maybe we could talk after city council, we could get your street, and I can look at, look into your specific question, would that be all right?
Yes.
Okay.
There is one other question, go ahead.
Oh, yes, my name is Eddie Brown, one twenty-five Longwood. He's just completely paving the whole Longwood, one hundred and nineteenth, all the way down to, I guess, one hundred twenty-first, one hundred twenty-second street. Right in front of my house, there's, I don't know, they're coming back to fix that, but right in front of my house, I still see water standing in some of those areas. And the last time it rained, it froze, the water is there, so I don't know, they're coming back, they're going to come back and fix those areas.
I think that one was as a result of a fire plot that was leaking.
No, not in front of my house, no.
No? It was across the street?
When it rained, like tomorrow morning, you come by and look at it. It's going to rain tonight, because we still have standing water that's just been paved. But a lot of areas, it's not draining the way it should drain.
Uh, I, I understand that, sir. We do have a plan to fix some of those areas on, on Longwood Drive. We went out there with the contractor of public works last week. Some, some, some of that work can't happen until the weather warms up.
But they just, they just completed it. I'm sad, why wasn't that completed when it was doing that?
Well, part, part of the problem with Longwood Drive and doing roadway repairs, you got to work within a certain budget, and unfortunately, Longwood Drive is extremely flat. So the, the contractor and the, and the engineers for the project and the tied-in to the alleys all, all did their best job to try and get that to drain properly, but there still are problem areas that will be addressed. We, yeah, we understand that, we recognize that. And ideally, exactly like you say, that would happen the first time.
Seems like it should have been done when they, you know, the first, when they completed it, seems like though they should have repaired that along with the complete repairment, because that water stands there, and now it's freezing right in front of my, right in front of my driveway, and you got, I got a stack of ice there when it, when it freezes.
Right, I, I understand. And again, that, I mean, part of that's budgetary, budgetary, uh, that, that the permanent fix for that would have been to regrade all of Longwood and put in concrete curb and gutter, but the budget wasn't there to do that, we will fix the problems that had developed.
I still, I'll be.
Go ahead.
Mr. Brown, that has been addressed to miss, to our city engineer previous, um, we've talked about this with the contractor that did the work.
Yes.
That is on the agenda, one of the top things I've asked him to resolve that was not done during the construction. And that was one of my objections, and Mr. Alredz, you're well aware of that.
Yes, Alderman.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Eric.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, everybody.
Let me just make this one comment, uh, so the council knows. In the last two weeks, I've had informal meetings with the, I guess you want to call it the interim staff, can't call them, oh, is he the governor, he is the governor, J.B. Pritzker, regarding some funding that was taken away from the city of Blue Island with the previous government, uh, governor. They said that they would look into it, uh, and to try to get us the money that we had promised the city of Blue Island to address the north side of Blue Island, both the east and the west side of Blue Island, and go, go on to some of these streets that are not covered through TIPS or water rack, et cetera. So I did speak with them informally, and also spoke with Sylvia from the Cook County, uh, CDVG director, and she also made the commitment that she was going to be looking into getting us more community block grant money since we're, a lot of them is probably ready to go. So we're looking into that, and also with the knocking down of the remaining factory at one hundred nineteenth and Ben Cent. So that's the update on that. City clerk, any business?
No business, sir.
Any bids?
No business.
Mr. Treasurer?
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, I wish I got the reconciliation statement in the packet, and, um, I want to clarify that someone just brought it to my attention that, um, TIP seven, and also this, uh, flex plan savings is not on this. It was on last month's, uh, reconciliation statement, but missed on this time. And we'll get that clarified next time we go into the office. Make sure the computer and the person that's handling this will, uh, be aware. I apologize for that.
The motion for a subsequent reconciliation statement? Motion by Alderman Ossling, do I have a second? By Alderman Carr, any questions? Broke up, please.
Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulo's?
Aye.
Pulo's, aye. Johnson?
No.
Johnson, no. Bellato?
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly?
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald?
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Ossling?
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson?
I can make this statement. Because the seven, TIP seven, is not listed on here, which I had a conversation with our treasurer about, I'm going to vote no.
Thompson, no. Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman?
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Nine ayes and two noes.
The next mention for my, the transfer of, um, the strictly non-structured funds, should we have that in your packet? The month, the main one I'm going to explain is TIP three. Out of TIP three, we have roughly four hundred and forty-three thousand, which is roughly, uh, four hundred and twelve debt is for the allocation of asphalt. Robinson Engineering for thirty thousand, sixty-four dollars and fifty cents. And Robinson Engineering, California Gardens, one hundred and seventeen dollars and seven five cents. Four, uh, four, four, two, seven, four, four, seven, three. Okay? And that should be, uh, as far as I know, that would be the last payout out of that TIP.
Do you need a motion?
Motion, please.
Do you need a motion, Alderman?
Question?
Okay, I'm going to get the motion. Ossling, and you got a second, Alderman Fernwald, go ahead.
It was, it was some monies, uh, left over. Are those going into the appropriate spots as far as like education, the school district, and things of that nature?
Yes. I have to go back. It's on your agenda. Okay. You're welcome. Thank you. Anything else? Broke up, please.
Slattery?
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulo's?
Aye.
Pulo's, aye. Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Bellato?
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly?
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald?
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Ossling?
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson?
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman?
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Eleven ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. And, yes, City Attorney?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The first ordinance on the agenda is ordinance number twenty-eighteen dash zero six zero, an ordinance declaring surplus revenue in the city of Blue Island TIP three district special tax allocation fund, and authorizing the payment of the surplus revenue to the Cook County Treasurer for distribution to the affected taxing districts on a roadway basis. Alderman, uh, Johnson, this, this ordinance, in effect, directs the payment of the surplus of a million, four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and two cents to the county, to Cook County, and then to be distributed to the various taxing bodies that receive taxes from the, the area where the TIP district was located.
It, oh, uh, thank you, Councilman, is that a term or a time, uh, on when these, uh, funds could be allocated to those?
It'll probably be distributed within approximately six months.
Six months, oh.
Yes, that's what the, uh, city project director was, uh, informed by the county board.
Thank you, sir.
Do you get a motion? Got a second? Who's the motion? Motion by Alderman Holly, second. By Alderman, any questions?
Slattery?
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulo's?
Aye.
Pulo's, aye. Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Bellato?
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly?
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald?
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Ossling?
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson?
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman?
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Eleven ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
Uh, the next item is ordinance number twenty-eighteen dash zero six four, an ordinance authorizing insurance of general corporate purposes tax anticipation warrants of the city of Blue Island, Illinois. The amount of the warrant is five hundred thousand dollars.
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
Do you need a motion, Alderman Ossling? Second by Alderman Dixon Johnson. Any questions? Go ahead, Alderman.
Um, two weeks ago, Dave Meyer brought this thing, kind of showing that we don't need this money. He, he had a cash flow projection. So I guess my question is, if we don't need it for this month, can we, can we vote on it when we are going to need it? I mean, according to the cash flow projection he brought, we don't need it for the month of December.
From what I understand, Counsel, there is paperwork, it needs a timing matter, right?
Yes, I mean, I didn't negotiate the warrant, but perhaps the treasurer could address it, but I think it was negotiated with Beverly Bank.
Basically, the understanding is that, uh, it's up to five hundred thousand, maybe less than that. And I found out the interest rate is four point five. On the last time, it's about a point percent off. And the intent is, whenever we get it all finalized, it probably won't be until the end of December or January. So we feel it might come to the fore again, possibly, if you want, if you want to, you know, if you want to make it less, that's up to you, the county authority.
Basically, a cushion, just in case the city needs it. Go ahead.
Uh, so this was just to get the paperwork in order. We don't need to take the whole amount at this, at one time, right? Or will we take it all at one time?
Take it, whatever we decide to take, it was up to five hundred thousand. Whatever we decide we want, that'll be the figure, or the corporate authority decides. Basically, that'll be the figure, and the intent is, whenever we get it, we get it, the money, that by end of, uh, April, we would pay half back, or maybe the whole thing back.
The warrant that we issued in increments, if, if it's determined that that's in the best interest of the city, but the ordinance itself is the authorization to issue warrants not to exceed, or up to an amount of five hundred thousand dollars, and, and a rate of not to exceed four and a half percent. Sorry.
More or less.
We can issue it in increments if you want to.
Go ahead, one.
More or less it's just in case money, because if we get hit with an ugly snowstorm, we already got outdated equipment, things of that nature. It's just, it's a cushion.
Correct.
You, you will need the money, uh, I'm going to discuss some things with you in close session, if you would, if you need.
Any other questions? Yeah, I'll broke up.
Slattery?
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulo's?
Aye.
Pulo's, aye. Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Bellato?
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly?
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald?
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Ossling?
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson?
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman?
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Eleven ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is just an abatement of four hundred thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents of estate taxes levy pursuant to ordinance zero six dash oh four six. Essentially, you're abating the levy for the next installment of taxes to be used to pay for the water bond. So it will come off of the text bill. There, you need a motion to approve the abatement and file it with Cook County.
Got a motion? By Alderman Holly, second by Alderman Bellato. Any questions? Broke up, please.
Slattery?
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulo's?
Aye.
Pulo's, aye. Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Bellato?
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly?
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald?
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Ossling?
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson?
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman?
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Eleven ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
The next is, item is an ordinance number twenty-eighteen dash zero six five, an ordinance approving and authorizing a lease with one-two-seven-five-seven South Western Avenue LLC, concerning the parking lot located on the east side of Western Avenue and to the south of one-two-seven-five-seven South Western. The ordinance, or excuse me, the lease, at this point in time, is for a ten-year term with two separate options, one of five years, one of four years. The next item on the agenda is just an abatement of $400,712.50 of state taxes levy pursuant to ordinance 06-046. Essentially, you're abating the levy for the next installment of taxes to be used to pay for the water bond. So it will come off of the tax bill. You need a motion to approve the abatement and file it with Cook County.
Got a motion? By Alderman Hawley, second by Alderman Bellato. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farinwald.
Aye.
Farinwald, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
No.
Thompson, no. Carr.
No.
Carr, no. Pittman.
No.
Pittman, no. Seven no's, four ayes.
This is to adopt the ordinance.
Correct.
Aye.
No, totally mine, but...
He's still on the motion.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it works out, and we want to do it.
Correct. One other item on the agenda.
I have a question, though. Is there any way, because we don't have a secondary meeting this month, that this can be tenderly approved based on negotiations with the ultimate that board? Can we do that, or council?
No.
No.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, they're waiting until in January, probably by the time.
I think it should be continued on the meeting with Alderman Hawley. But is it possible to be able to expedite that time, like, you know, maybe an emergency or a special meeting beforehand? Because I know these people are waiting on the time to take. But, you know, our other businesses need to be, you know, they need to be acknowledged on what's going on, and if they can either help them prosper or negate their business, they need to have a word or a say in it.
And I'm fine with deferring. Can I make a motion like that, council?
You would want to...
Make a motion to defer approval on this. Grant approval pending a meeting with the alderman of the board. But probably not the final few things.
I would say my advice would be no on that one, because we don't know what's going to happen in that meeting. If it was to direct a change to address three or four or 10 or 15 parking spots, that would be one thing. But I don't know what to say. If the developer asks that it be presented to the city council this evening, because they have some sort of financing tied to having a commitment on this.
Let me just make this comment. It is the county.
Cook County Health System is the ultimate tenant, according to them, is going to be the Cook County...
So actually, they could just really gangster if they wanted to, is what I'm saying, mayor. I'm just asking.
No comment.
I'm just saying, you know, and if it's that case, then we really don't, you know, not much of a choice, you know what I'm saying?
Let's put it this way. It could have some ramifications regarding other issues if they say, you know what, you don't want to cooperate them, guess what?
Yeah, the ultimate tenant will be the Cook County Health and Hospital System, and that's all.
And again, it's something we've been pushing to make, not only transportation, how the medical district, this is another facility coming to the neighborhood. I understand the alderman's concerns, but maybe something can be addressed as all the allowances contingent to...
And they have a committee meeting, with a committee meeting suffice, instead of going back to the full council. What a committee meeting suffice, instead of going back to the full council, they can call a special committee meeting.
Well, either the full council can adopt the warrants, or the lease.
So if, I mean, the first city council meeting is January 8th, it has to be done by the end of this year, or like, January 8th is pretty early.
Well, maybe not for the contract, it's not early, because they want to move on the what?
They, all they informed me was that their financing was tied to a commitment concerning the lease itself. And they didn't tell me that their financing was not going to be improved. They didn't tell me when, or if they're...
I'm in favor of the ordinance, but we need to work something out for these businesses, whether it's we allocate parking spots at, I suggested this, at high, at the lot at high in Western, but these other businesses have to have some place where they can park, or they're not going to get ticketed for parking on the street.
I'm just going to throw this out. There might be another entity, businesses in Blue Island who wants a parking lot that's willing to lease certain spots during the day to the pest control company.
So that's possible as well?
Yeah. And the other thing was too, for like, delivery trucks and things of that nature, to be able to come through and utilize that area for delivery.
There's someone from the developer who needs, maybe they can address the city council and give you some understanding of what their circumstances are. I don't know, but specifically.
Go ahead.
Sure. Hi, my name is Anthony Zeratoli. I'm a representative of the ownership of the Blue Island Building, and here as the representing the tenant for potentially the parking lot next door. And I do understand it, and we didn't turn a blind side. It was raised, I didn't know that it was an issue that, quite frankly, we needed to be cosigned, you know, in the lease itself. There was a discussion about it, I apologize for that. I think the idea, the complication is this. The lease that we have for the building is contingent on the parking lot of delivering 50 spaces. That was, that number, and the idea of the lease with the lot of the parking lot was contemplated, it was having discussions, no guarantees, because we may obviously really have that authority. I'm open to the idea, and do I think that all 50 spaces would be utilized at the state that poll, I don't know what they, if that's what the county is saying. If there was a way to work it out with the tenant, that they would allow us to identify, say, five or six spaces that would be outside of their rights under the lease, I would be agreeable to that as the owner of the building. I just can't, that's not what's been approved by the Cook County Board, because that's kind of where we are in between. Regarding the timing, because it's not, we're not playing a game, if we could put off the financing further, we would. The requirement to close on financing is part of the lease. The lease is predicated on getting this approval, and therefore the financing is tied to this as well. So we'll push off the closing of the financing for another, whatever the next meeting would be, and that would be, and that is problematic, because then we're out of compliance with the Cook County lease. So it's a little bit more complicated. So if there was a conditional approval, that we could work something out, I don't know how that would be structured in the setting, but we would be agreeable to work with the other, we're not trying to ignore the needs of the community or the neighbors, so.
Well, could, I mean, would it be possible to amend this, to specify somehow that there be some provision for up to 10 parking spaces to be available for community business use?
Somewhere.
Somewhere, somehow, you know?
I mean, not in this lot. I, you know, I don't know. He was also looking at some space across the street that he said would be ideal, but he didn't know if that was even available or possible to do. It was kind of odd. I think it's, maybe that, they might have to put a used car lot in there, I think.
Oh, across the street.
Yeah, across the street. He was happy with that, except that he doesn't know. So if we can facilitate some sort of meeting with them...
Go ahead, Alderman.
Yes, is it possible to approve this with conditions? Want to get this moving, but also try to accommodate with those conditions, the residents or the business. Is it possible to be able to approve it now, today, with those conditions?
What conditions are we talking about?
What, they said 10 parking spots somewhere?
Somewhere.
Because like I said, they might have to run through that, to have a delivery to the store next door, or whatever, whatever. I understand the concerns, you know, of the business that's been there. But if we could approve this with conditions of such, I don't know. Councilman, that's why I'm directing, you know, pretty much toward.
I can put a condition in the lease, but it has to be one that would be, from what I understand these gentlemen are telling us, would have to be one that would satisfy his, the ultimate tenant, the county. I think he said he committed to what, 50?
50.
Are there 50, 150 spaces in the lot?
There's, the way our detectives laid it out, there could be strikes with handicap spaces, 450 total, total lot, total spaces in the lot, yes.
Total 50.
Yeah. So it's contemplated that they would have full use of the lot, you know, during their business hours, that's what we represented, nobody was shooting for, and it's kind of over held to them. The parkers, the spaces that they need, is it their employees, is it their employee parking?
Yes.
I mean, I wish that, you know, maybe there's something that I can work out, something, you know, with the neighbor, that they can utilize, maybe the rear of the property in a way, and try to accommodate some of their employee parking. I don't know if they have an opportunity to park in their yard in the back.
They have a van.
But they keep their vans there overnight, that's where they park their vans.
But it is a time thing, isn't it? So after a certain time...
But if it's their employees, who are asked to take their time, we're going through business hours, so it's not going to help them.
Alderman Donahue, go ahead. Could we just lift the parking restrictions on that portion of Western from what the street is to the next block, so we're not taking, the employees can outpark how much traveling? Instead of parking on... So they allow them to park on the east side? Yeah, on the street. What I, I'm trying, what's the, what's the street, Walnut to whatever?
Your parking restrictions, it's up to you, but does I GAT have any requirement that you limit parking to a certain amount of time?
I doubt it.
I don't know.
No, I'm just saying, it seems like they could be a reasonable solution, if we lift our own restrictions, and we allow those enforcement, you know, we will, we change the enforcement, and, yeah, change the ordinance, we limit the enforcement. Or whether or not they have a time group that, you know, lets the employees have that business and don't touch it.
Right, that's basically the response.
So we can approve it with conditions, and so they can keep moving. And we can keep moving. I made a motion.
Again, with the pocket idea...
You do it on Lockwood.
Yeah, you do it for private residence, right.
You do it on Greenwood, he says 8:00 AM to, you know, you can't Monday through Friday. I mean, we're going to turn around and tell a business who's going to put $10 million into a building, no, like all the other development that tries to happen in this city? Come on. Approve it, and then we can come up with the parking ourselves, and how they doubt that I GAT is going to say no to Western Avenue, two blocks.
I made a motion to approve it, but you need...
I would just like to make it clear that we're not suggesting that we not approve ultimately.
Yeah, but they're on a time...
I get it, yeah, but that wasn't our suggestion, in that light, in this business. Does a motion...
Careful.
Do I understand, that was just to point that out. If you...
I'll leave that to you.
He can still make it.
You know, I'm trying to reach way back into my parliamentary knowledge. Now, if you want to reconsider, then one of the aldermen who made, who voted with the majority, which was to deny, would make a motion to reconsider. Anyone else can second that motion, but someone who was with the majority... Johnson, Donahue, Holly, Farinwald, Thompson, Carr, Pittman. So the first motion, if you made it, would be one of those individuals would have to make a motion to reconsider. That would be Alderman Johnson, and then is there a second on that, Alderman Bellato? Now, a roll call on the motion to reconsider. And I vote means you're going to reconsider the ordinance, but first you have to do the reconsideration, okay?
Roll call.
Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
I am very much in favor of your business, I just, I still would like to talk with you about it, but I ain't going to say no, but you're going to, it's going to pass.
Holly, no. Farinwald.
The fourth ward votes no.
Farinwald, no. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
No.
Thompson, no. Carr.
No.
Carr, no. Pittman.
No.
Pittman, no. Seven no's, four ayes.
This is to adopt the ordinance.
Correct.
Aye.
No, totally mine, but... He's still on the motion.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it works out, and we want to do it.
Correct. One other item on the agenda.
I have a question, though. Is there any way, because we don't have a secondary meeting this month, that this can be tenderly approved based on negotiations with the ultimate that board? Can we do that, or council?
No.
No.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, they're waiting until in January, probably by the time.
I think it should be continued on the meeting with Alderman Hawley. But is it possible to be able to expedite that time, like, you know, maybe an emergency or a special meeting beforehand? Because I know these people are waiting on the time to take. But, you know, our other businesses need to be, you know, they need to be acknowledged on what's going on, and if they can, either help them prosper or negate their business, they need to have a word or a say in it.
And I'm fine with deferring. Can I make a motion like that, council?
You would want to...
Make a motion to defer approval on this, grant approval pending a meeting with the alderman of the board. But probably not the final few things.
I would say my advice would be no on that one, because we don't know what's going to happen in that meeting. If it was to direct a change to address three or four or 10 or 15 parking spots, that would be one thing. But I don't know what to say. If the developer asks that it be presented to the city council this evening, because they have some sort of financing tied to having a commitment on this.
Let me just make this comment. It is the county.
Cook County Health System is the ultimate tenant, according to them, is going to be the Cook County...
So actually, they could just really gangster if they wanted to, is what I'm saying, mayor. I'm just asking. I'm just saying, you know, and if it's that case, then we really don't, you know, not much of a choice, you know what I'm saying?
Let's put it this way. It could have some ramifications regarding other issues if they say, you know what, you don't want to cooperate them, guess what?
Yeah, the ultimate tenant will be the Cook County Health and Hospital System, and that's all.
And again, it's something we've been pushing to make, not only transportation, how the medical district, this is another facility coming to the neighborhood. I understand the alderman's concerns, but maybe something can be addressed as all the allowances contingent to...
And they have a committee meeting, with a committee meeting suffice, instead of going back to the full council. What a committee meeting suffice, instead of going back to the full council, they can call a special committee meeting.
Well, either the full council can adopt the warrants, or the lease.
So if, I mean, the first city council meeting is January 8th, it has to be done by the end of this year, or like, January 8th is pretty early.
Well, maybe not for the contract, it's not early, because they want to move on the what?
They, all they informed me was that their financing was tied to a commitment concerning the lease itself. And they didn't tell me that their financing was not going to be improved. They didn't tell me when, or if they're...
I'm in favor of the ordinance, but we need to work something out for these businesses, whether it's we allocate parking spots at, I suggested this, at high, at the lot at high in Western, but these other businesses have to have some place where they can park, or they're not going to get ticketed for parking on the street.
I'm just going to throw this out. There might be another entity, businesses in Blue Island who wants a parking lot that's willing to lease certain spots during the day to the pest control company.
So that's possible as well?
Yeah. And the other thing was too, for like, delivery trucks and things of that nature, to be able to come through and utilize that area for delivery.
There's someone from the developer who needs, maybe they can address the city council and give you some understanding of what their circumstances are. I don't know, but specifically.
Go ahead.
Sure. Hi, my name is Anthony Zeratoli. I'm a representative of the ownership of the Blue Island Building, and here as the, representing the tenant for potentially the parking lot next door. And I do understand it, and we didn't turn a blind side. It was raised, I didn't know that it was an issue that, quite frankly, we needed to be cosigned, you know, in the lease itself. There was a discussion about it, I apologize for that. I think the idea, the complication is this. The lease that we have for the building is contingent on the parking lot of delivering 50 spaces. That was, that number, and the idea of the lease with the lot of the parking lot was contemplated, it was having discussions, no guarantees, because we may obviously really have that authority. I'm open to the idea, and do I think that all 50 spaces would be utilized at the state that poll, I don't know what they, if that's what the county is saying.
but I ain't going to say no, but you're going to, it's going to pass.
Holly, no. Farinwald.
The fourth Lord votes no.
Farinwald, no. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
No.
Thompson, no. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Eight ayes and three noes.
Motion carries. Ordinance is adopted. Lease is approved.
Next resolution?
Okay, and the last resolution is a resolution number twenty eighteen, there's zero three four. Resolution approving and authorizing a full-service vending agreement with AutoFrost to provide a fast-core robotic vending machine at the Janey Recreation Center.
Motion. Alden, Bullos, second by Alden. Uh, Mr. Johnson, any questions? Roll call, please.
Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Bullos.
Aye.
Bullos, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Excuse me. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farinwald.
Aye.
Farinwald, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Eleven, aye.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Mayor, you report, Community Development Committee?
Yes, your honor, the Community Development Committee met on Tuesday, December fourth. Uh, the meeting was called order at eight thirty-six. Present were Tom Holly, Alderman Holly, Alderman Bellato, Alderman Frostow, Alderman Johnson, Alderman Osling, Alderman Rita, and Alderman Thompson. Also present was, uh, staff, Mr. Capari, development manager. Um, there was no public comment. There was no business. Under new business, Corona Title Corporation, the awning sign discussion, uh, they had put up an awning that they thought they had had approval from the, uh, previous building department, uh, manager, and, um, they did not pull a permit, so they, uh, so before they put up the awning, so there was, uh, no oversight with the new community development manager. Um, the awning does not, uh, does not fit the U T O D district permits. Um, it was suggested by Alderman Bellato that we, uh, since the, since he was working on the information that was incorrect, uh, from the city, that, uh, that we pay for the, um, new awning out of the Business Development District funds that complies with the U T O D signage requirements. Uh, so that motion was made by Alderman Bellato and it was seconded by Alderman Frostow to vote to use the funds from Uptown, uh, the Business Development District to compensate for a new awning. Um, the vote passed, uh, seven ayes, zero nays. Maple Tree Inn, um, the committee reviewed a request to waive the building permit fees pertaining to the proposed reconstruction of the Maple Tree Restaurant. Uh, Eric Lundberg was present to speak on his behalf and on his intention to rebuild the Maple Tree Inn at the present location where the building burned down. Um, after discussion, uh, there was a motion made by Alderman Bellato and seconded by Alderman Rita to vote to waive the building permit fees. Um, there were four ayes with Alderman Holly, Bellato, Osling, and Rita voting aye. Alderman Thompson voting no, and abstaining was Alderman Johnson. Um, that is, uh, I'm going a little bit out of order here, but, uh, that's number two under Community Development Committee. Uh, and I'd like to make that in the form of a motion to waive the building permit fees for Maple Tree Inn on the total reconstruction of the building.
Good motion. Second by Alderman Bellato. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Bullos.
Aye.
Bullos, aye. Johnson.
Abstain.
Johnson abstain. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farinwald.
Aye.
Farinwald, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
No.
Thompson, no. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Nine ayes, one, no one was there.
Next.
All right. The committee reviewed a request to waive the building permit fees for the installation of a vertical platform lift for a resident who resides at twenty-three thirty-five Hundred Twenty Street in Blue Island. Um, Amy Siciliano, a representative for the Illinois chapter for Bank of Wish Foundation, uh, wanted to help out a six-year-old girl, girls' request to have a mechanical lift on her home. Um, there was a motion by Alderman Thompson and it was seconded by Alderman Osling to waive the building permit fees. Um, all were in favor. A motion passed. I would like to make that in the form of a motion to waive the building permit, uh, fees for Make-A-Wish installation of a vertical lift at twenty-three thirty-five Hundred Twenty Street.
I'm going to allow you to make the motion, second by Alderman Thompson. Second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Bullos.
Aye.
Bullos, aye. Johnson.
Yes.
Johnson, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farinwald.
Aye.
Farinwald, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Eleven ayes.
Thank you.
Uh, Kevin Bluen from Marange General Contractor is rehabilitating a house at twenty-seven twenty-two Union Street. It was current, it was previously a two-unit apartment that was in very bad shape. He has purchased it and he is going to convert it back into a single-family home. Uh, there's numerous expenses, uh, to do this and separate or to, uh, rejoin the utilities and everything. Uh, he was asking to, uh, waive the, uh, building permit fees for this conversion of a multifamily, a previously single-family home that was converted into a multifamily, back to a single-family home. Um, a motion made by Alderman Bellato and seconded by Alderman Rita to, a vote to waive the, uh, the building permit fees. Uh, motion passed. Um, and I would like to make that in the form of a motion to, uh, waive the renovation, the general, the, uh, building permit fees to re-convert the single-family home back to a single-family home.
We've got a motion by Tom Holly, second by Alderman Bellato. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Bullos.
Aye.
Bullos, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farinwald.
Aye.
Farinwald, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Eleven ayes.
Thank you.
Uh, Eric Alvarez from Robinson Engineering gave a similar presentation that we just saw today. Uh, there was discussion about the Uptown Business District. Um, it was talked about, we would like to move forward with gateway signs, uh, maybe less of them on private property. Uh, look into the idea of having some, uh, uh, murals painted uptown and to use as gateways and, uh, and do some, uh, I guess that's it. And that would be the next steps for the Business Development District. Uh, we also reviewed the Building Development, uh, Building Department reports. Under committee comments, uh, I thought we were scheduling the next Community Development Committee because we were to meet on, uh, Tuesday, January first. So we're switching the meeting to Wednesday, January second, twenty nineteen, at seven thirty in the, uh, city, in the city council chambers here. There was a motion to adjourn and the meeting was adjourned at nine thirty-three P M.
Thank you very much. Finance Committee?
Um, Finance Committee met on December fourth. Members present, Alderman Frostow, Holly, Farinwald, Thompson, Osling. Absent was Alderman, Alderman Viera. Also present was a representative from Cass Barrett's office, Mark Miller, a representative from Aldi, Gabriel Marie, and Alderman Johnson. There was no public comment. The accounts payable for twelve, twelve, two thousand eighteen in the amount of nine hundred eighty-nine thousand, three hundred forty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents. We have large invoice items. Um, I think they were brought up by the treasurer. Gallagher Ash fault for, um, California Gardens, and that's the tip three. That was four hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty-eight cents. We had our health insurance, one hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and two cents. Garbage was one oh eight, one hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventeen cents. Our Cook County dispatch was fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and seventeen cents. Robinson Engineering was thirty thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. And then we had repairs on emergency vehicle front and, front end loader, twenty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-six cents. Warren Oil was twenty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifteen cents. A T and T was twenty thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents. Mayor, I would like a motion to approve.
A motion we have. Second by Alderman Holly. Any questions? Alden, go ahead.
Chairman, Osling. Do we have enough money to pay the bills?
I think we do.
All right. Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Another question, roll call, please.
Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Bullos.
Aye.
Bullos, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farinwald.
Aye.
Farinwald, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Eleven ayes.
Thank you very much.
Um, Alderman voiced complaints on Lake Shore not picking up recycling. Director Marzal will address this issue with Lake Shore. Um, payroll for eleven thirty, two thousand eighteen, in the amount of three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars and seventeen cents. I'm asking for a motion to approve.
Okay, motion we have. Second by Alderman Bellato. Any questions?
Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Bullos.
Aye.
Bullos, aye. Johnson.
Merry Christmas.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farinwald.
Aye.
Farinwald, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Eleven ayes.
Thank you very much.
Um, under discussion, the class eight renewal for Aldi Corporation, um, was approved by Alderman Frostow, Holly, Farinwald, and, um, no vote from Alderman Thompson. This will come before the full city council in January for our approval. Also, under discussion, committee reviewed and approved the request for the tax anticipation warrant. Committee reviewed and approved the tax abatement ordinance, and tip three closeout was reviewed, reviewed and approved. And I'm going to say this wrong because I don't know how to say it. In, in less, in less investment, um, they were, their grant was approved, and this will be in the January two thousand nineteen accounts payment. Um, the City of Blue Island, Rain Garden cultivation proposal is on hold until two thousand nineteen to be rebid for the project. No further business. Motion to adjourn at eight thirty. Next meeting is January eighteenth, seven o'clock, East Annex.
Thank you very much. How about Kelvin's State Committee?
Uh, no, I'm going to report, your honor, we met tonight. We'll have, um, we'll part with the next meeting, our next council meeting, and our next meeting will be held January the eighth, from East Annex.
Thank you very much. Judiciary Committee, any minutes?
No, uh, I don't have anything from the chairman, but I think our next meeting is January twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen.
Thank you very much. Judiciary Committee?
The minutes of the meeting of Monday, November nineteenth, which was held six, oh, six P M in the East Annex here. Uh, present were Alderman Farinwald, Bullos, Viera, and also present were Attorney Lieutenant Kennedy, Director Finance, Mike Marzal, Kathy Keener, Mark Keener, Carol Pace Green, Rose Baker, and Ben Silver of the Citizen Advocacy Center. Public comment, all pertaining to the public comment ordinance. Mark Keener suggested that few rules are needed for public comment, that there is no need to limit the number of speakers, and if there is need, a special meeting can be held to accommodate additional speakers. He also said there is no need for punishment because this orderly conduct is already against the law and there should be no requirement that a person must be present to make comments. Rose Baker asked that sign up for public comment not be terminated at the start of the comment period, rather later, Iber should be able to sign up. Carol Pace Green urged that the ordinance not violate disabilities laws and provisions be included to make it possible for seniors and for persons who are unable to attend the comment. Kathy Keener said she was concerned about the lack of access to the drafts of the ordinance and that the committee should make them available to the public. And Ben Silver said that political speech is the most protected area of speech. It cannot be restricted unreasonably, and that for anyone not able to attend, there should be provisions for a lawful submission. Uh, the minutes of Judiciary Committee for August twenty eighteen, uh, motion approved by Alderman Viera, seconded by Alderman Bullos and approved, and the minutes of the Judiciary Committee for, uh, September seventeenth were approved under a motion by Alderman Bullos and seconded by Alderman Viera. The proposed, uh, I'm going to say this, uh, at least twice tonight. It's an important thing. Proposed change to committee meetings to date, uh, will, will, the committee, the Judiciary Committee will meet on the third Tuesday of every month, meeting on the third Monday. Motion approved by Alder, uh, motion to approve by Alderman Viera, seconded by Alderman Bullos and approved. Uh, there's a, uh, small, large claim review draft was reviewed by the committee and discussed and requested a draft ordinance. The public comment ordinance draft was reviewed and discussed by the committee, and, uh, a number of changes were suggested and requested for Attorney Kennedy to provide a new draft at the next Judiciary Committee meeting, which will again be Tuesday of next week. Uh, regarding the alley that is north of one hundred and twenty-third and west of Incense, it was agreed that an ordinance should be drafted, making this a two-way alley. This ordinance will be submitted to Municipal Services Committee for review. Uh, the issue there being that the, uh, the alley is in poor condition and it's easier for residents to get up and down if it was a two-way alley, whether it was a one-way, and Robinson Engineering had, uh, reviewed this and set the gap as feasible. Uh, regarding the request for new weight limit signs on Cooper's Grove, the committee requested staff review with Robinson Engineering. And regarding a parking ordinance on Cooper's Grove, uh, a draft was reviewed. The committee discussed and concurred to recommend city council approval. Uh, there were no aldermen's concerns. The, uh, meeting was adjourned, removed for adjournment by Alderman Viera, seconded by Alderman Bullos and adjourned at six fifty-five P M. And again, the next meeting of the Judiciary Committee will be held Tuesday, as all future meetings will be December eighteen, excuse me, that should be, uh, January. This is, that's right, December eighteen, I'm confused, at six o'clock in the city hall this day.
December eighteen.
December eighteen, I'm sure. December eighteen, am I right? Excuse me. Oh, no, this is, I'm sorry, my.
Eighteen, excuse me.
Yeah, I got that perfect.
You said the third, now it'll be the third.
The third Tuesday, the third Tuesday.
That's what I wanted to say. Any aldermanic announcements available? Alderman Carr, boy.
I just want to thank the fire department, the police department, and, uh, emergency management for the, um, the job they did for the Christmas parade. Everybody was kept safe. Everybody was happy. Everybody had a good time. So, thank you.
Alderman Johnson?
Yes. Uh, first, I want to say happy birthday to Alderman Thompson.
Yeah. Thirty-nine A M.
And, uh, I wanted to, uh, make a comment for about December, the twenty-second, uh, at the Blue Island Recreation Center. I believe Bob Jackson had reached out to, if not all the aldermen, most of the aldermen, asking if they could have, uh, five needy families come and address who they are, you know, so he can be able to give them a turkey and a food basket, and that, um, that those families could be able to enjoy Christmas just as well as us. And, uh, we have an annual Christmas party down there, so everyone in the city is, uh, invited. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lloyd Alderman Thompson?
I'd like to thank all the people in the fifth ward for this past year, uh, for being the great people that they are. And wish them a merry Christmas and a happy and healthy, prosperous New Year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, just want to kind of make an announcement. Uh, I know Alderman Bellato, Alderman Holly have been very interested in, in some others in the issue of, um, multifamily homes. We had some discussion about it tonight. Uh, I had a meeting with the Community Development Director and, uh, city attorney, and the, um, feeling is that actually the ordinances that we have in place and the rules are available, and he will be working diligently to return, uh, single-family homes to single-family use through, uh, enforcement that he feels is available, and he's asked for some time to do that. Consequently, we don't think there's a need for an ordinance, and it's, it's time we'll be watching it. And, uh, if you have any questions, you might, you know, want to talk with him about it, but that, that seems to be a reasonable way to go at this point.
Thank you very much. We do have, any else?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Uh, I just want to thank everybody who, uh, participated in the, uh, Christmas in Blue Island event last, uh, well, I guess it was a couple of weekends ago. Um, even in spite of the rain and in the morning and early afternoon, we still had a lot of people turn out for the Kringle Mart and for the rides. The kids were riding in the rain, so they're tough. Um, and, uh, I would like to thank, uh, my committee, which is, uh, great. Uh, they volunteer pretty much an entire year working to put the parade together and the whole day together. Um, there's a number of fundraisers that, uh, helped raise money for things like the rides, the tents for the Kringle Mart, um, uh, and a lot of other expenses that, uh, come with putting on the parade. And, um, and I just want, I appreciate all their work. Um, I'm going to try and remember everyone's name as we go here. Um, but, uh, Alderman Osling and Alderman Viera, and, uh, worked on the committee along with, um, uh, Aaron and Pat DiCavato, Colleen Waldman, Christine Holly, Tom Mantel, um, Bobby Gruka, um, Betty Harmer, Jerry and Lori Campione, and Rayanne Cantello-Zilman, and.
Sandy and Tom.
Colleen Waldman.
Sandy and Tom.
Oh, Sandy and Tom Norr. Thank you. Uh, so it's a, it's a large committee, so I, it's, I, I'm always afraid I'm going to leave somebody out, so I usually try not to do that, or have it ripped out. But anyways, uh, they, they worked hard. It was a nice event. The parade was great. Thank you to Alderman Bellato for getting, uh, two bands out from District two oh five, which helped out a lot. And, uh, yeah, they were, they were fun. And, uh.
I owe them pizza Friday.
They were diehards. I mean, they, they came out.
Yeah, they did.
One band played from the time they got there at three o'clock until they, I thought they were going to be tired by the time they walked down the street, but they just kept playing.
Over the Wildcats, that's Mr. King's, uh, home, I remember.
Okay.
You mean that.
But I'd also like to thank the police department, the fire department, the Blue Island Homeland Security Detail for all the work that they did to keep the parade route safe, open, I think the changes that we made for lineup and the parade route itself worked out pretty well. And then I'd also like to thank Public Works, who did an amazing job cleaning up the next